Ryder? Taylor?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
Okay. So, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
It's removed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public comments. So this is where we ask for public comments for anything other than what's before us as far as an application goes. There's no one here, so I assume there's not going to be any other application, I mean, other than the application comments. So, we can move on with that. Everybody have a chance to look at the meeting minutes from July 10?
Motion to approve the minutes is written.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So, we're ready for construction activity application from Tom Pearson? Yeah, let's go.
Hi, I'm Tom Pearson. What we've been trying to do over at 401 East Terrace is get the steps improved and improve the entrances to three different apartments. And we have had the Wexford County Inspector, Bob Scarborough, come over and, as you see, he's approved at least what we've done thus far. So as far as legal, it's fine. Now, and I understand that the Commission wants to try to preserve the historic value in the area. I mean, I've lived there for 20 years, so I understand that. And I know that from the previous meeting that you wanted lattice on them, and we've gotten them, and we have made it legal, and I guess with the slides it would probably be easier to talk about. The first one, this is the entrance to 401. It has lattice. The wood with the wrought iron, the wrought iron is in cement. So, I mean, it is stable as a rock that is there. I understand there's two different mediums there, you know, with iron and wood, but that's how it sets right now, and it is legal. And then there's a side view there. Okay, let's go then. Is there any questions on that? Let's go to the next one. This is 401A, and you can see that the steps and the spindle work. Now, spindle work, they're not just tacked on the side like often decks are. These are centered and there's spacers in between them, so they're, you know, I think they're done with some appeal. They're nice. But that's the side view, right here on the left, and on the right, you can see that it has spindles on each side and then a rail going down with lattice on each side. Okay, next. Now, this is sort of with talking with Bob and understanding where you people were on the last meeting, you kind of wanted those steps out of there. And you know what? I agree with that. I've looked at them and thought, "How can I work around them?" And it was just, it was just so complex to work around them, that I said, "Yeah, eliminate them."
Are you talking about the cement steps?
Yes. Out of there. So, what I'd like to do, and Bob said that if I do a retaining wall there, if I take the steps out and do a retaining wall there, I can do from a number of different mediums for retaining wall. Could be stone, could be railroad ties, designer, you know, designer stone, poured cement, now, or cement block. There's cement block on the right-hand side. The one photo that I wanted straight on didn't, didn't come through, sorry. But you can see on the left photo, there's a two-block-high retaining wall. Now, if I were to go block, I'd consider three-block because it would match up more evenly with the existing cement wall that was a former, yeah, right to the left of the steps. You can see it in, you can't really see it in foreground, but you can, in the right-hand view, you can see it to the side. Okay? So, get rid of the steps and put a retaining wall with no entrance to the deck at all there. Maintain the deck, as you can see, there would be lattice above those steps. Obviously, we didn't put that high because if you're going to get rid of the steps, it's going to be a different cut. So, we eliminate the steps out of there, we put a retaining wall, and I would like to keep the length of the deck, the length of the deck is 14 feet. They're each seven, should I stay at the mic? Sorry. Sorry?
We can hear you.
Okay, very good.
But it may not record, so it's probably.
Okay, I'll stick around here, sorry. They're each seven, and, you know, obviously, we didn't do the spindle work on the right-hand side, but in Bob's report that if it was, it would certainly be legal. We want to try to continue in the same fashion around this, this is a western view as we view it, western, from the west, okay? So, as I talk about the porch, the west right-hand side in the front needs to have spindles, and they'd be done exactly like the ones on the left, and then, of course, we'd go down on the right-hand side there, or what would be the south face, spindled across. Now, there's two posts on there, and what I would like to do with those is none of this would be attached to the house at all. This would be totally independent. And I did have the fire chief come out and look at the deck, and his comment was, "It is safe and it is sturdy." Very sturdy. So, what I would like to do there is I would like to make a bench. It would come up 18 inches and go back 18.
Are you talking about right back here?
Yes. Yes, right between those two posts. It's a, it's a span of seven feet, and simply come up with a permanent, you know, bench that would be 18 inches high and 18 inches across, and that would, I think that would take, and of course, put lattice on the front of it, want to get the steps out of there, and I am going to put rock, 10A stone, in underneath each of those ports, or I mean, underneath the deck, the...
Lattice only in front of the steps, Tom.
Yes, lattice only in front. I wouldn't put lattice in front of the...
Right.
That's, you know, that's an egress way for 401C to get out of there. But it would be 10A stone in both of those. Of course, I'm going to put landscaping fabric down, so, you know, as to keep it, and then... So, that's, if you can understand, if there are any questions, gladly answer anything that you have.
Okay, let's start with this one, because I think this is the one that probably is the one that's most complicated, might have the most questions, right? I was looking for the original photos that we had on this. So, one of the issues that was brought up last time was the reasoning for having this enlarged porch is that you were trying to make it accessible in case there was ever a need to have a gurney in there or something. You weren't trying to make this ADA compliant. You were just trying to provide some additional space in case there was something that might be needed in an emergency, like a gurney come in. Is that, is that still your goal, or why?
Certainly, that's an added bonus to it, I think, also the appearance of it. Now, I realize that a deck that long was not original, but the deck that I took off was not original. That was not original. What you see up there, I mean, I don't have any old photos, but what I'm guessing from some of the neighborhood that told me that there were poles and it came up like a canopy or whatever, all right? And that's what it was, and now I've got cement around there, and of course, the cement steps. But it certainly is stable, and it, certainly it does, especially with, if I had, was able to keep it and put the bench on there.
So, I guess I was trying to get at the reason for doing it. The original reason of trying to provide some maybe easier accessibility to the building was the reason, but you're, it also sounds like now you're starting to treat it more like a deck, you know, that you're trying to, with the bench and more like an outdoor sitting area.
Well, I mean, certainly, I want to try to make it as nice as I can, as long as I'm doing it.
Bring that hazard to your attention. I'm telling you, it's a maze, but drop.
Yeah, if the deck wasn't there, there'd be, now, that's a one-bedroom apartment. It is bulk approved, I might add. But the, the only way out of that house door-wise is that door you see right there. Now, the window currently with the deck on there is a drop of about three feet, maybe three and a half. To the ground, it's eight. So, it's, it's quite a drop. Now, I have two handy, excuse me, not handicap, disabled, I have two disabled residents that live in there that eat healthy. They're bigger people, all right? So, I, I'm not overly concerned with them, but yet, if, you know, I can construct it and it is sturdy and useful and functional, plus adds to the safety, I think, and have appeal, I mean, certainly. I think the deck, you know, you can form your own opinion, but, and I think the work looks very nice.
Do you feel like the bench would hinder that as an alternate exit to the front door?
It would enhance it.
It would enhance it, because lattice would go on the end, as you see the view here, lattice would be on the end there, at the south face, and the bench would be on the other side of it, between those two posts, on the right-hand side, not against the post and not attached to the house. This structure totally be independent of the house, totally. So, no stability or no strain on the house.
I'm not sure Erin was talking about aesthetics. I think she was talking about if an emergency vehicle had to take somebody out by a gurney. Am I correct?
Right, or just the fact that now that the deck is there and you're providing less of a drop, if someone had to use that as an exit, would building that bench, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
For the original intention of, one of the side bonuses or the original intention of that, would it, do you see that as hindering that at all?
I don't think so, because the, of course, if they had to step out of the kitchen windows, they could step right out of it, but, you know, I mean, a gurney certainly, you would have room even if the bench were in there. I mean, I don't think it would hinder, but, I mean...
What's the overall width of that deck?
The width?
Yeah, from, from the house out, how much clear space you have? Just so we can give an idea.
Uh...
Is that six, seven feet wide?
It is not seven feet wide.
It's six.
Six?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so you're going to have, you're going to have four and a half, is that, you're going to have...
Yeah.
Four and a half minus...
Minus the width of the two, of four by four.
Four foot clear.
Four foot clearance between the outside face to the bench and the inside face of the pole. For walk space. It's over three foot. It was on...
I don't think so. I think it's the same. The house might step in.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah, the house steps in.
Yeah, you're right. It gets wider than, at the narrowest spot, you're saying.
Right.
Uh, there is, yes, there is a differential of about, mm, eight inches, or maybe, maybe 12.
Eight to 10.
On the, as you step out, it, the door cuts in beyond, as you see on the right.
I was just kidding, Ed. If you had four foot clear, you do have room for a gurney.
Okay.
I mean, so if someone were to wheel it that way before they brought it in, the door, there is room for it to sit there, even if the bench is there.
Yeah, and the only reason we're bringing it up is because that's what was suggested as the original purpose of having this extended to begin with.
Sure, yeah.
So, is, you know, having the bench, they're still going to...
I, I don't think it'd really hinder it, because you also have seven feet on the other side of the, of the four by four. To, the spindled, the spindle portion is seven feet long.
That's above the window?
No.
No.
No, the, the...
To the other side of the door.
See, as you look at the left-hand side, look at the left-hand photo, above the steps, I mean, it's kind of angled, but that, there's about seven feet there to this, you know, from the center of the post. It's basically 14 feet long.
Good target.
And depth, 60.
That's what they want is depth.
Mm-hmm.
Outside pole, outside face of pole, outside to outside, existing is six foot. Now, I was going to put an 18-inch bench from the inside face of the post to the ground with an 18-inch back, suppose, 18 to the top of the pole, with a handrail to their corner of the bench seat, and all they would have to do is step down in case of fire, because that's a secondary exit. If there's a case of fire on the other side and they couldn't get out that door in the front side, they would have to drop down eight to nine feet out of that window over the top of the sink. That was the safety reason why I extended the deck, so they wouldn't have to do that. It was a secondary egress. Reason I wanted to put a bench there, so they could step out of the window, they would have to step down out of the deck. It would also have appeal, and it would be accessible, and there wouldn't be any problem, there wouldn't be anything impeding. So, I was going to put something, a sartre or some kind of appeal in advance, so they could come out there to sit down, plus through the safety situation.
Well, I, part of our, at our last discussion, where we were looking at that, was the, it was kind of mentioned for this extra safety and this extra help if someone needed to get out with a gurney and this kind of a thing for handicap issues, yet we're not making it handicap accessible. So, I guess our thing is more the aesthetic than the safety, so it's wonderful that the other folks you've talked to, Mr. Scarborough, have assured, assured you of the safety side of things. But we're really the aesthetic side of things, and not just that the deck looks pretty and nice, but that it fits within the historic district guidelines in our neighborhood.
Yeah.
So, from that perspective, we had, last time this gentleman was here, we had talked about that deck going back toward the setback, you know, where the door's set back, and then it comes to that corner, the deck just no longer existing there, and then the egress issue is eliminated because your window was still cleared, and that is, as an exit, you have to have an exit, but that's, that still gives you a bigger room than what that deck originally was before it was replaced. And so, it's a matter of, if you need handicap accessibility, kind of the stance was, well, it sort of helps us move around our historic district guidelines if you actually establish handicap accessibility and meet all of those criteria, and then it sort of negates a little of what we're doing, because obviously, there wasn't a ramp there originally. But if we're not meeting handicap accessibility, we're back to historic district guidelines, which are about what the house was before, and trying to match that, which, like you mentioned, a covered porch, at least myself as a commission member, I might be...
I did mention a covered porch, though.
No, no, he didn't. But you said there was a canopy potentially, originally.
I mean, you said, yeah, but that, I, yeah, and I have no...
It may not have been a covered porch.
I mean, there were, there were poles in the cement. There's poles in that cement around, you know, I mean, this could be handicap accessible. If we came out this way as we look at the view here, this is a southern view on the right-hand side, that could come down and go out, so it could be handicapped accessible.
I guess our contention before was if, the other gentleman had mentioned extending the porch all the way across to meet your other porch further down, or your other deck further down, platform, whatever, and like, we'll extend it at that time if it's going to become a whole side-long thing and, you know, versus kind of halfway doing it now and it's just sort of sticking out there, looking more like a modern home with a deck versus a historic home, since it's not a backyard. If it were backyard, it wouldn't matter if it was a deck. But being an open deck in the historic district, it would have been more like a small platform for people to have entrance and exit, or it would have been a platform that was covered with a little roof, or maybe it was a canopy once upon a time, but probably a covered porch. I'm not saying that was there. I haven't seen old pictures of this home either, but that would put it more in line with the historic district look and the guidelines. If, if you are wanting to extend the porch, it looks more like a, you know, I mean, extend the deck, it would make it into the covered porch look, if you had a covered porch and columns, you know, it would flow better with your neighborhood, I guess is what I'm getting at, and make it easier for us to approve it versus just this deck sticking out that isn't really handicap accessible guideline, and yet, if it's for aesthetics, an open deck is not aesthetic, aesthetically a match with the historic district.
If it had a cover on it, Gwen, then it would be more in line with the historic guidelines of the era or whatever, or the, you know...
It would fit more with the character of the structure, yes.
A covered porch looks more that way than a deck.
It, it may have had one, it may not have. It's hard to say.
Yeah, we could say whether it did.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I guess this is as good as mine.
Is there any way to determine, I mean, we don't know what size that landing or that porch on there would have been, ever.
Anyway, yeah.
I don't know if there's anything to tell. I mean, I agree this is probably larger, but also that, I don't know that we really have any way to tell either, right?
Yeah, not really. I think what she's trying to say is that if you're going to go that big, typically it would have been, it would have been a covered porch, you know? When you go that big, you're kind of taking it up a notch, so they wouldn't have just left it open. So, she's just saying that from aesthetic point of view, usually when you go something like that, it's going to be more of a wraparound porch than just a landing, which is pretty much what, what you have in the other ones, for example. So, I think it's just whether or not we feel this is still acceptable or not, you know, basically, because that's what it's coming down to, because we don't know what was there before, we have no historic photos of it, so...
What if I forewent the bench? I mean, you know what I mean? I didn't put the bench there, all right? Is it solely that it wouldn't be covered, or we don't really know what was there? I mean, I don't...
That's why I'm so slow. I don't know who's what and what's...
I don't think the bench has anything to do with it.
No, the bench isn't...
Your bench has nothing to do with it.
The only reason we brought it up is because you were just trying to go back to what your original purpose for doing it was, and that's what he said, you know, at the last one, so I was just trying to bring it up.
Would it not look more like the historic wraparound porch kind of thing if it connected to that other deck further down? In other words, if it went all the way across there?
Probably.
I think it would, right?
Probably.
The covered thing, yeah, that, that certainly is the historic look, but I'm not sure that we can, that's quite a step.
Without photos, it's hard to...
Yeah.
Well, and I think, to be fair, last month, Tracy wasn't given that as a criteria.
Right, right, absolutely.
They're trying to match what we told them to go home and do, so...
Right.
Would it be possible, at some point, if you connected them, would that make it, would that be a step towards making those two apartments handicapped accessible? Seems like it would.
Uh, I mean, to be handicap accessible, uh...
No?
No, no, it wouldn't.
Well, you'd have to add...
It really wouldn't. There'd have to be a ramp.
Oh, you'd have to add the ramp.
Right.
Yeah.
Put the ramp where those concrete steps are. Where the concrete steps are.
You know, even if there's other codes that need to be applied on that, too, because then I'm going to end up having...
Width of the doors.
Just kind of put the inside railings...
Right, right, right.
You've got three feet of height difference there. You, that, I mean, you've got 36 feet of ramp, plus landings.
Yeah, they don't think that's...
Oh, I see what you're saying, for the height of the ramp, yeah.
I mean, could that be connected to the other deck? Yes. Would it be handicap accessible? I don't think so, not unless we constructed a ramp. Now, it isn't to say that there couldn't be a ramp as we face that, face you there. The lattice, which I call the south, we're looking at from a south view, we're looking north. So, that's the south end of the deck or the structure there.
Dean's, Dean's point is that would be, that's not enough space to get the incline that you need.
Right.
You've got, you've got one and 12 on a ramp, plus you've got a landing. I think you're going to end up...
In the neighbor's yard.
You're not going to be allowed to put a ramp on here unless you have to. It's going to cost you a landing.
Unless you have to.
Yeah, right.
Lot of lumber. So, I guess that's why we had asked last meeting a month ago, just take off that extra portion from the corner of the house where the cement steps kind of go up, the corner that they hit there if they continued right up, that is just to the right of the door.
Right here.
Take the deck off from there over, because then leaving it a deck without making you pay more for a covered porch allows you, because you're really not making it handicap accessible.
Okay, no, no, not. Let me ask you this. For, for functional purposes, we could eliminate the right-hand deck, okay, and keep the existing one at the poles, okay? I mean, it's, now, that's probably a little bit wider than what it was, maybe, I mean, we don't know that for sure, but certainly, the, whatever, the 18 inches or whatever I'm gaining there from where it cuts around out of the door, the door is cut back into the house, and then it projects out a little bit, and it comes around that corner.
Right.
But it certainly, there's a lot of work in there, but...
That's not where we're at.
See, my, my question...
I, I can't, we can't talk to two people.
Excuse me, just a minute. Yeah, one at a time. I guess my question is, I don't have any total photos of the side of this house, so for me to even say, "Look, making it seven feet longer makes it look proportionately wrong or out of style," I'm not sure that I can make that call.
That's a point.
I think if, if we're saying, "Look, you could wrap these and tie them together," to me, that becomes a lot more out of scale and cumbersome than what we've got. And, I mean, it may look too large, I guess I almost need to go by and look at it, but from what I'm seeing, it's not a huge deck. It's still only 14 foot long. It's not like it's 30 feet long. So, the size of it, I guess, to be honest, doesn't bother me a lot, but I may be a little...
It does bother me from the historic perspective, but I'm, you know, I'm one person's opinion up here, too, and just trying to put forth the pros and cons of, you know, what options are out there.
And I think, just to bring one other point up, I think the reason why it's even an issue at all is because it's a corner lot, and because you see it almost like you would at the front. If this was in the back, then...
Right, yeah, that's, that is true.
I think it's because it's so visible, but we're just thinking, "Okay, if we say okay on this, does that mean somebody else wants to come in and do a deck?" And it's on their front, now we've got to start saying, "Okay, we okayed it there, and it's a corner lot, you can see it like a front." You know, so we're looking at, we want to be consistent, too, so I think that it's kind of brings open those questions for us. I, I don't know, I kind of feel a little bit like Dean. I think, for me, I understand what you're saying, Gwen, but I, I guess I, I know I've seen it, because obviously, I go up that street a lot, and it doesn't seem overwhelming to me as far as taking up the whole side of your house. I mean, it seems like it's relatively small scale-wise, obviously bigger than what you had there, but I'm not sure that it's enough to really take away from the historic character of the house or any surrounding houses. I don't know that it has that much impact. Getting rid of the cement steps, making sure it's up to code, I probably have a bigger issue with the fact that all three of these steps are all designed differently and are still, yeah, we still have that issue, because that, to me, looks really hodgepodgey when you look at the house as a whole, you know?
How about if I, okay, yes, I under, and I do understand that. I understand that, because, can we go back to slide one? All right, there's two mediums in here, all right? Now, I could eliminate the wrought iron, okay, which is very sturdy, and run wood to the house, okay, and put the same kind of spindling and have it continue in the wood mode. I mean, I, what I would like, I mean, I would be willing to do that, and that's, I would like to also keep on the third one, the last one we just looked at, I'd like to be able to keep that 14 feet on there, because I think it, it enhances the place without going too big, but man, it's, it, I, I think it has nice symmetry, and I think it has nice appeal, and if I make this one all wood, then all three of those would be wood, you know, so that would be consistent, and I would have lattice on each one of them and try to make them as similar as possible. Now, we put the bars up there, obviously, because, I mean, it was, the first thing I was going to do is make it legal and replace the, I did have wrought iron and an individual broke it, so... broke it, so, I had to deal with it. So, we went with that, and I understand the inconsistency, so I would be willing to put wood on that and finish it in a decor of the centered spindles, and let's go to the second one.
I think you're picking up on some of what was brought up, but part of what was brought up at the last meeting was exactly the wrought iron to the wood was a question, but there's a question of the style of the wood compared to the style on the other decks.
Like, where's your balls on that? See what I'm saying?
Okay, yes, right, yeah, sure, if we.
You gotta remember, though, that you guys started the project before we had any opportunity to have.
Yes.
We're looking at it now, saying, if you brought this to us from scratch, we would have recommended that you did the same design and the same materials all the way.
You know what, yeah, and I agree with that, absolutely, and the balls, the balls would be eliminated. The balls would be eliminated, and the rail would look like that. It would, there would be consistency with all the rails, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't have a ball.
It's still a different rail style, if you look at the two rails, this is a flat, squared, whatever, two-by-four, what have you, if you look back at project one, that top rail is completely different. It has a little bit more decorative detail, but it's a matter, you know, and I like the one on number one better, as far as the rail, but whatever, for you, it's a matter of picking one style that's consistent with all three. If you flip back to your first, do you see that on the left side, you have a shadow there, that's a cut in the wood, where you have like a rollover or something, it's a totally different style than what you have on the next one over. The actual top, where you would put your hand to grab to walk up.
That one would be a continuous two-by-six, from post to post, extending out from the front base of the riser.
Yes, I mean, that.
How I would do that, and all three would match.
Yeah, that we could.
Just pointing out, they don't match, right?
Yeah, right now, they.
Those are the things we'd ask for.
The two-by-six top, we could make that one look just like the other two, so there would be consistency.
Or, if you like this one better, to switch the other.
You know what, I don't, I kinda prefer not the ball, because those, quite frankly, those balls are splitting on the top. You know, they're treated, and I like it ball-less more, I really do, and the only reason I put balls on it in the first place was, I was just replaced, I was going functional. I needed a rail, and that rail was there, you know, I didn't consider the historic perspective, it was more like, get a rail up there, so I am, I'm a legality issue, but certainly, I can, and Tracy, can produce consistency in all three of the decks, I mean, all decks, all three of the spindled and handrail and steps.
Could you go back to the project three again? Let's just, because here we don't, it don't, it doesn't appear, I mean, you've done some work since we met last time, obviously that's added, but even this right here is different than what you.
Did on number two.
Yeah, than what you had, so it looks like you did extend it down, is that the same, yeah, is that the same?
You know what, they, this I can tell you, they are constructed the same, maybe we don't have.
So two and three are the same, you're saying?
Oh, absolutely, and one, the only difference with one is the top rail and the balls. If we eliminated the top rail.
One came in as a prefabricated rail unit, right? You just.
Yeah.
No? Components, you put it to.
No, no, it was not, no, that was made.
Tracy made.
Yes, mhm.
For project one.
Yes.
Well, if you look at two and three, number two, the handrail is completely outside the steps themselves, it's to the side. Number three, it's actually on the side.
On the steps.
So that's where they're pointing out your inconsistency is that, it's the same style, but the placement.
Oh, no, it is.
Isn't that what you're?
Right, that's another one, yeah, that one goes all the way down and the other one doesn't, we brought that up at the last meeting.
Plus solid risers versus open risers.
The, alright, let's go back to the first one. Now, the first one has cement steps in there.
Right.
Those are, I mean, you know, those are, those were there, and they're still usable and workable, you know? Now, stability is another factor, that I wanted to make sure that it was stable.
Sure.
You know, I mean, stability, I mean, I can certainly appreciate artistic, sure, but sturdy.
Okay, so, I guess if we take these project by project, so project one, I think the only issue we have, this meets the building code now, as far as the height and of the steps and the rise and all that.
Mhm.
It appears from, at least the comments that were made from Bob Scarborough, that they did. Did you read that?
Yeah, I did, yep, and that's fine, the only question I have is on project two, did Bob say anything about putting a handrail on the other side of those stairs or not?
No, he did not.
Hmm.
From the actual swing from the side where it comes out the door.
Interesting, because I had that posted on my steps and I had about that day, yeah.
You may want to consider it, just as far as liability, because it's higher than thirty inches on top of that stair, it's technically needed as a guard, if someone falls, that's your liability consideration, I just.
Plus, it'd probably look better.
You just may wanna think about it, because that's quite a fall from that top step if someone goes off the side.
Yes.
Okay, so project one, going back to that one, I think we're all, I wanna ask the HDC how they feel about, are we all in agreement that we'd like to see that wrought iron pulled out and replaced by wood that matches what else you have there? I think that's gonna be something we're gonna wanna see.
We understand that it was there and sturdy, and, but, but we have to look at the aesthetic of the issue.
Certainly, I understand that totally.
And so, on project, okay, so that's project one.
I'm sorry, when you said what to match was there, what you mean is to match the style of projects two and three?
Correct.
And that the wood railing on the side of the stair would also match projects two and three?
I think that's what we need to make that recommendation.
And then remove the balls.
You mean the balusters?
Can we go back to one, Brian? Thank you.
We're talking about the actual bollards at the end of the railing, and the profile matching, matching just the.
What I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna be taking the top of that off, cut the poles off on that angle on that slope, just put a two-by-six on there.
So it matches the others.
Okay, that's what we're asking.
That's what we're asking.
Good.
All the way around, continuous with what's existing.
That's what we're asking, thank you.
Okay, and then in project two, do we have anything else other than just to suggest he might wanna consider rail, handrail on the other side from a safety perspective? And I know when I put steps in the back of my porch, when I had to do that, there, I think I've got four steps too, and he, and that was the other building inspector, John Surya told me I had to put one on each side. So it is kinda interesting that that wasn't brought up, but I think that's why Dean's saying, you know, it might be something you might wanna consider, because.
Again, that's a building inspector's call.
Yeah, it is, we can't override that, so.
But that's his call.
Right.
Well, the only other item I'd bring up on that is, oh, I'm sorry, I looked at the wrong picture, so I guess you do have material on the sides of it.
Yes.
It is now, yeah. And we're not concerned about the closed risers on that one? It is somewhat, I mean, it's consistent with the cement, but just wanna point out that those are, the ones on three are not. Were you gonna do the?
I think they should be the same.
Yeah, are you?
I think three should be enclosed.
Were three gonna be enclosed? Okay, okay, that's fine, that's what.
The lattice work.
Yeah, so if you're planning to keep that consistent, then I think.
Oh, absolutely, the lattice work will be, it'll mirror all of them.
And the closed risers as well, on the steps, yeah.
The little bit of kick plate, you know, where you stick your foot through on number three, but you could not on two.
Correct.
When you go up those steps.
Yeah, number three, we'd like to see closed risers as well.
That's right.
Number three, closed.
You can't see it, but, see how these are open right here?
Oh, close, yes.
Close them up.
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
That's what we're talking about.
Yes, yes.
Because then that'll match the other two.
Okay, closed risers. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so then, I guess the only other decision that has to be made here then, and your suggestion, I thought with the cement steps removing that, and the retaining wall that you're saying would match height-wise what you have over here?
Correct. It would go, it'd be uniform in there, and then there would be, you know, underneath on both of those would be nice rocks, so it, I think it'd have a very nice appearance and certainly clean up the parking lot, I mean, the, I mean, I just didn't feel like going over there with a hammer and knocking those out, because there is a wall, and.
Are those, are those all poured solid, those?
They are.
Is there a possibility of just cutting those off, having a Cadillac concrete saw and cut them, or is that not possible?
Oh, I bet it could.
Why not?
Uh.
Might be worth getting a price for them, because.
The existent from that, plus the other two courses that are in there, the concrete block, is cracked, I mean, it would move us to go ahead and put six inches high and a retaining wall from side to side.
Yeah, it's, there was a, there was a rail in that, on the right-hand side of those cement steps, so there are holes in there, so, you know, I will be able to chip at it a little bit or whatever, I don't know exactly, yeah, that'd be, that would certainly be a consideration, cut it out.
And leave it for your retaining, for your retaining wall, even the backside of it.
What he's proposing would look better.
Um.
Putting into a consistent retaining wall.
Now, with a retaining wall, I have some options there, but what I thought was, my thoughts on the retaining wall were possibly poured, why? It would be more like what's there, you know, it'd be gray and level, you know, obviously leveled out, and make it about the height, I say about, it's about three feet, make it about three feet, and it'd be straight across, and it would fit the decor, contour of everything else, because I think they poured them, you know, rather than put railroad ties in there, which, I mean, I don't know if railroad ties would be, you know, that would maybe be, I don't know, shay.
Usable, but it's like, if you're gonna put the investment in, they're not gonna last as long as putting concrete in.
I mean, do you have any problem if I were to put poured cement in there like it is, at a height of about three feet, so it's basically level with the other?
No.
Not at all.
Okay.
Alright, and then I guess the only other issue is the size of the deck, and what is the?
I'm sorry, one other thing on number two and three, the handrail on the steps or off the steps? Number one is off the steps, number two is off the steps, number three is on the steps.
Oh, there, please.
Then number three means building code as well, apparently?
Yes.
Well, the hand part extends to the end of the stair, the, is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm talking about the actual rail is up on the.
Oh, that's just further than at the very end.
This one's on the side.
Where's these others?
But if the, if the riser is enclosed, which he's going to do, that doesn't make that much difference.
I'm just saying as far as matching them.
Consistent.
We're trying to match.
The consistency.
Yeah.
If I were to do that, I would be actually putting the whole handrail back into the deck, into the inside of the step, and it would be taken away from the width of the step.
Right.
Right, but that's what you did on three.
That's what you did on three.
That's what I did on three, because I tied in the outside stringer to the outside post with two bolts.
I'm just saying, one way or the other, which you're gonna have more room if you go with the way you did number one and two.
Right.
But, that one also ties into the whole rail with them on the top deck, too.
Yeah, but it's a different, it's a different setup, too.
I can't do it, I can't do that, it has to go through concrete, on the top, gotta have to go through the existing concrete, while the top deck was number one, that's a deck over.
Right.
That is a deck, there's cement under there, that it was original, I.
Right, but if you went to number three.
Number three and changed that.
And changed, took your end post out and narrowed your steps by five and a half inches, so it was on the inside of that vertical, it would have the look she's talking about.
If you put it on the inside, it's opposed to the outside.
See, we don't have a good photo.
He doesn't, yeah, I can.
It's the photo that you gave us originally.
You see what?
Let's see.
It's on the photo that you gave us the first time.
The previous one, that's what's showing it right there.
Yeah, that's kinda what we need a shot of.
Oh.
Oh, here, he's got it, he's getting it right now. How's it gonna match, how's it gonna match to this though?
Or closer to a preview with that deck you were talking about.
So.
Yeah, if you put this, if you put this stringer.
Yes.
On the other side of this post, and ran it up here, so basically you cut these shorter, you narrowed that stair up, so it was on the other side of this, it would match, it would match this look.
It's not like anyone's walking on the stair anyway.
What you have on one and two.
It would match what you've got here, where it's on the outside, is what she's saying.
One's on the outside, two's on the outside, and then three would be on the outside.
She's just commenting on the consistency of the board.
The other two.
Yeah, no question, that way, that would, well, that's, because that post.
That would be consistent and look, no question, that's too bad, because I really like the width of those steps as is, but.
But it doesn't affect the usable portion of width of the step either way.
Sounds like what you've got on the other one.
That's because the edge of your step's still gonna come to the edge of the railing, I mean, the part that's under the railing.
Your handrail's already there.
Yeah, so if, okay, gotta come up, yes, right, if you took the stringer and put it on the inside of the pole, that's what you're suggesting, Dean, and then cut the.
Cut the ends of those, cut the ends off.
Cut these off.
Okay.
Shorten it that way by five and a half inches or whatever, to the other side of it. I mean, you're not adding any material, you're not doing anything, it's just that then it's got the same look, and.
So it looks like this, like what you got on number two.
Yes.
Does that make?
Yes.
I'll just run another two-by-eight on both faces, like I did on number one, I'll take that stuff off, put the bolt on the outside, cut the ends of it off, and I'll run this two of them just like this, and sandwich them, and go right up underneath, you know, then I'll be back to saying, but then I'll still both look uneven. What it is on number one is two two-by-eight plates on end like this, at the same slope as the concrete steps.
Yeah, we're not looking at one at all.
We're trying to get, we're trying to.
Just cut these off, Tracy.
Just cut the steps off.
Just cut those off. The right-hand side of the steps, they just go in however many inches.
So that it looks like what you have on number.
But Dean, what you're asking is to put the stringer on the inside of the pole?
Because that's what you've got on project two already.
Look at what project two looks like.
Okay, go back.
Because it doesn't make sense for you to redo that whole rail length, I mean, I'm trying.
See, you see how you got, there you go.
And the cheapest solution. And if you notice, the blue underneath, that was what was existing frame underneath, and what I did is I kept that existing frame, and that's the reason why you see that that holds on the outside, coming from the outside.
Oh, yeah.
And it kinda took that away just a little bit, that's the reason why I.
Okay.
And I don't disagree.
So they need to be consistent, that's what we're.
I need to do that consistency, so it looks like that on number one, I'll just cut some steps off and put the stringer on the opposite side of the pole.
Now, and three.
You're talking about number three.
Number three.
Yeah.
Number one, three, yes, okay, good, hey, we're, yeah, number three, to move them
on number three.
Who's on first?
But again, then you can use the materials you've got already, I don't think you have to.
Right, right, right.
But from the very, very beginning, we, that's what we wanted to see with this project more than, well, that was our main concern, is just having that consistency and meeting code from steps to steps, I mean, building materials and design, right.
Okay.
So the only remaining thing then is the size.
The size of the fourteen-foot deck, whether or not we want to accept that or request The size of the 14-foot deck, whether or not we want to accept that or request it be cut back to the seven foot, which is what you're proposing as an option.
As a distant second guess.
I don't, I guess...
Do please remember too, that this stuff was done before you ever got a permit period or anything came before us, so we could have prevented a lot of this from duplicate pay for later.
We're not trying to make your life...
I understand that and I do apologize.
We hate putting you through the wringer, but, you know...
I want to work fully cooperative with this board.
I have to, I think, agree with Dean that I'm not troubled by that extra little bit and probably for that apartment, that really is only outside place to sit. I mean, you know, I think we can live with it as long as it looks consistent. I'm not troubled by the size. I think you're troubled by the size.
Yeah, I am, but I'm, you know, everyone has their opinion and how to approach the guidelines.
I think originally, if you had, originally I would have preferred it to just be the seven foot and it looks more like a front entrance, but you made it a deck, so it's a deck and...
Well, I think you're trying to make it somewhat more useful for the, you know, renters that are there. I mean, you're looking for some additional exterior space and I think they're just, you know...
I agree. I think if they had come before us originally, we probably would have said, well, let's talk about this as it is. You know, I value your opinion and I don't...
No, it's okay, people disagree. It's not that we disagree. Is it worth taking down?
Your point is right.
Is it worth taking down? And I'm fine with the size as well, so...
I think my only reservation is just that it's that corner lot, you know, it's just, it's going to be very visible.
Side yard.
If it was the back, I don't think we'd have any issue at all.
Right.
So, I mean...
And once the other spindles get up and you put your rock in and your retaining wall, it's probably going to look better than, than this, so...
Okay. So, let's make a motion here based on what our recommendations are and what, what we've agreed to do. Do you want to read that back, Brian? Because I think you've been taking the notes, so...
Okay, so the recommendations thus far are to, on Project One, remove the wrought iron and replace that with wood, and that the style of the railing should be made to match that of two and three, the top rail and removing the ball caps. As far as Project Number Two, the recommendation is that a second railing down the left side of the steps be added.
And that's just a, that's your recommendation?
You don't want to include that as a...
No.
I don't think we have the...
We don't have, yeah, exactly. If the building inspector allowed it to happen, we're just saying it might be a good idea, but we can't say that he has to do that.
Okay, so this is a, just an advisement?
Yeah, just a suggestion.
Okay. All right, so then as far as Number Three, recommending closed risers, removal of the existing cement steps and the installation of a retaining wall.
To match the height of the adjacent retaining wall.
Okay. Okay, so removal of the existing cement steps and installation of a retaining wall to match the height of the adjacent retaining wall. Also on Number Three, I believe the consensus was to move the stringer on Number Three to the inside of the posts so that it would match Project Two. And then as far as size, you're leaving that? No recommendation?
I think that's...
Recommendation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Does somebody want to make a motion for this?
I would move those, are they five points plus a recommendation?
All in favor? Or is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
I will oppose the length thing, so if it's all in one lump motion, then I would oppose all of it. So, does it matter? I'm only one vote. So it depends on if you guys want to let it stand as that motion for all of it.
Other comment that I would add is that this does need to be finished within a year, right? Is our opinion, whatever stain, is that a requirement?
It is in our design guidelines, which I believe you got a copy of from Brian, yeah.
You indicated last time that you had planned to do that.
Yeah.
But obviously you're going to want the, you're going to want the weather also before you test it. So that's why you've got up to a year to do that.
Correct.
Right.
We do. It's in the design guidelines that if you use womanized lumber, that it be painted the same color as the building or a compatible color within a year, or a year from now.
Should we add that as a point?
Yeah.
I think we should.
I think so. That's a good point, I forgot about adding that. Okay, so are we ready to vote?
I think so.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Tom, did you have something else?
Not really. I plan on having this done before the next meeting, all that work.
Good.
That'd be my goal. I'm going to have to get aggressive with the steps, but yes, to have the, to have it together. You meet the third...
I don't know that you need to come in.
You don't need to.
Okay, cool.
But if we see, if we see it done any differently, then we might be calling you back.
No, I appreciate your flexibility with it. I was really threatened having to take that off because it just is, got nice symmetry and it's really going to improve that area as well.
I think it makes it probably more useful for your tenants. I think, you know, that's kind of why, where you have to start weighing, you know, you want it to be useful for the residents as well.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thanks for coming back.
So we have one other discussion item. We wanted to talk about possibly changing the meeting date again. I know we had, we had changed it to Tuesday nights when Aaron came on board and when I sent out the email back when, it was pretty, it was okay with everybody, but now it appears that for Mark Snyder anyway, it does not work. So do we want to consider moving this back to Monday? And I, it's the second, it would be the second Monday, correct, of every month?
Aaron, are you okay with that now?
I've since changed jobs.
So it would be okay?
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, I worked late clinic hours and now I don't work there anymore, so...
I'm good with Monday.
We appreciate you changing careers, just saying.
Yeah. Yeah. Or for Mark, I should say.
That's right. The HDC.
I hate to lose Mark just on a day.
Well, when we apparently can change it now and it doesn't seem to be an issue, so, okay, so I guess we should probably vote on that?
Just allow me to say that between now and November 6th...
You're going to be a little busy?
Every day is bad for me.
Yeah.
After that, Monday's fine.
We'll be lucky to see you next month, all right?
You'll be lucky to see me anytime.
Yeah, that's fine. All right. So does somebody want to make a motion then?
I make the motion, we move our meeting night to Monday.
Okay, second?
At 5:00 P.M.
At 5:00 P.M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So I'll send an email to everybody just reminding them so they can all get it on their calendar and make sure Mark gets that too. So when is the next Monday?
September 10th.
September 10th?
Probably in Lansing, but...